...and training them to what is important in community involvement. Thank for all those who are represented here today, and we have special blessing on them with the work that is about to take place. And it's in your holy name we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watch were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Good.
It's very fitting to have our meeting started today where we celebrate our civic youth, which is spotlight local town communities. So, thank you for that. We have, obviously, a full house today with civic youth there. Our first quarter is going to be, I'll try to match everybody up before we get just sworn in real quickly. Does everybody from all the students, do y'all know where you're supposed to be? Everybody's nodding? All right, then I'm not gonna bother running down the hall this day if everybody knows where they're supposed to be. Because after we get sworn in, anybody that has anything to do with the school board or not with city functions, raise your hand. All right, y'all are gonna be departing with, I guess, the, you're gonna be departing and going with the school system and going off and doing that, that's fine. So, but they get sworn in here, is that correct? You can see that, you know this very well. So, I'm gonna ask all of the, you're gonna swear all these folks in? Okay? Are you ready to do that, Mayor?
Whenever you're ready.
Absolutely, I don't think we're ready now. I think I've, Butcher does bad enough, they take enough time doing that. So, I'm gonna turn it over to her to do whatever it is she's gonna do, that's City Clerk.
Okay. If you've been designated as an elected official, if you would please rise and come forward and fix the city council plan as soon as possible. Good morning. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia? And that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Carterville? And that you will faithfully, as charged, do this justice office until God. Thank you very much, may it be seen.
All right, now that everybody's back and comfortably seated, if you are part of the school board, if you're one of those school board or school system designees, if you will head out that door right there. We will bid you adieu, we'll see you at lunch. I'm gonna go ahead and try to match everybody up now, so you know where you're supposed to be at the end of the meeting, so give me a moment. Evans Toviaev, you're with me. Sorry about that. Cameron Rhodes, you're with Ms. Hodge, Councilwoman Hodge. Emily Miller, Councilwoman Cooley. Mallory Hodge, you're with Taff Ren. Audrey Turm, Jay Step. Jackson Heilman, you are with Kerry Roth. Jackson Klein, you are with Gary Fox. Uh, let's see, we've got a bunch of school board people in here, I get to skip through. Juliana Hartley, you're with Tamara Brock. Phaedra Coleman, you are with Chief Carter, who's sitting right over there. John Blackhall, you're with, gonna be with Michael Hill, our gas superintendent. Garrison Hardy, you took his place, well, I'm sure you're a lot smarter than he is. We have got, where's our electric person? John, is it you today? John, Doolish, right back there. Charlotte McClung, you are with, who's here with Water Daddy? Sidney Forsythe. Uh, let's see. Cami Tinsley, you get Keith Lovell today. Sim Archer, you are with Chief De Primo, he's right there. Logan Cagle, you are with Greg Anderson, who's right there in the back, holding up the wall in the purple shirt. And Margaret Gaines, you are with Randy Manino via David Hardigree, so there. Did I not mention anyone's name? Not, just hang around and enjoy the party. All right, so now that we're sworn in, and we're officially official, it is time to approve the council meeting minutes from our September 6th meeting. And Council, you've had these in advance of today, and had an opportunity to look those over, and now would be an opportunity to make any corrections to that, and if not, motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. We have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and I believe, Marshall Hathaway, you gonna get us started with that? Come on, if you'd be nice enough to turn that microphone around for us.
Morning.
Morning.
Every year, we celebrate Fire Prevention Week in order to keep our citizens safe, and we'd like to do that this week with our official proclamation.
All right, and I will be honored to read this proclamation. It says, "Fire Prevention Week, October 7th through the 13th." It says, "Whereas the City of Carterville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Carterville, and fires of serious safety, excuse me, serious public safety concerned both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire. Whereas in 2016, home fires killed 2,735 people in the U.S., according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the U.S. responded to 352,000 home fires. Four out of five fire deaths in the U.S. occur at home each year. Carterville residents should identify places in their homes where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, whereas Carterville residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And when Carterville residents hear the sound of a smoke alarm, they should respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. Whereas Carterville residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared, and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Carterville's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas Carterville residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere," that's trademarked, so don't steal it, "effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Carterville, do hereby proclaim October 7th through the 13th as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Carterville to be aware of their surroundings, look for valuable ways out in the event of a fire and other emergencies, and to support the public safety activities of the efforts of Carterville's Fire and Emergency Services during the week of Fire Prevention Week. Side note, we're one of very few communities in the country that has an ISO rating of one that doesn't happen by accident. It happens by a commitment of every single person in our fire department. It's certainly a source of pride around the community and recognized throughout the country, the level of dedication and services that y'all put in, and you get to run towards people when they're having perhaps the worst day of their life, and we appreciate what y'all do every day, and I'm honored to give you all this proclamation."
Thank you.
started with that, please.
Yes, Mayor, there are three ordinances here. All the ordinances deal with the ability to allow the public to use credit or debit cards in order to pay various permit, licensing, and other fees that the city charges, and to use online portals. However, each software company we have an agreement with, and the credit card companies, processing parties that we have agreement with, have a different fee for the various departments. The first ordinance details the fee for the garbage municipal court, recreation department, and then places a general fee of $3.95 per transaction for all other credit card processing fees for the city. The second ordinance basically deals with all the transactions that go through the new CityView software that the city's using, which is done by the Planning and Development Department, which would be things like zoning applications, building permits, and occupational licenses, taxes, and those type of matters. And then the third one deals with utility charges, you know, paying your utility bill, which in the city at least, normally combines all of your water, sewer, gas, and electric on one bill, and it allows for that. All three are recommended by staff for your approval.
All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items? If there's not, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, you have the next item.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the Fire Department has requested an amendment to the fiscal year 1819 general fund budget to account for additional staffing needs. The total for half-year of that is $38,405, and this position is critical in the transition plan with a new EMS service in Metro. So, I request approval of that budget amendment for the Fire Department personnel.
Okay, Council, this is the second reading. We discussed it in depth at our last meeting. Any other questions or discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have first reading of case file SU-18-05. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you do it, this is case number SU-18-05, that is a special use permit application. The property, the subject property is currently zoned office commercial and general commercial. It's two tracts, they're combined of approximately 8.5 acres. With that, the special use aspect of it is, in the office commercial and general commercial zoning categories, residential is allowed above and behind commercial activity with that special use permit approval. So, to create the proposed mixed-use development that you're observing on some of the displays on the wall, they have to go through this particular process. The applicant went through the planning commission process and public hearing, and with that, they had discussions, and planning commission did recommend approval of this application subject to a condition with an eight-foot masonry wall adjacent to Point North subdivision. There are a few issues with that particular condition that they did place on there. It has been discovered there is a gas line that runs to the rear of that subdivision in the rear of this property.
That's, and I'm sorry to interrupt, and that's the yellow line that's towards the bottom of the tree line, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. And that's where the planning commission had proposed putting the fence?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, the eight-foot masonry wall is a pretty stout way of, sometimes a solid masonry wall, the visual effects of it are not that great. The applicant did have some additional suggestions other than a solid masonry wall, which will show different types of wood fencing and so forth that they may propose, and it may have to go on the inside of the buffer or detention pond as opposed to the outside. Again, additionally, planning commission did recommend approval with the condition as discussed. The applicant is present for this application.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point?
I have, what was the purpose for the wall? Is that for noise abating, or is it...
Well, there's a 15-foot buffer required per ordinance. I wasn't at the actual planning commission meeting, so I'm assuming it provided additional bufferage.
Basically, during the planning commission meeting, several of the adjoining property owners in that subdivision that's right next there were concerned about pass-through traffic, so they requested, during their presentations, they asked that there be some sort of barrier in between them, and the applicant, during the presentation, stated they were planning to build a wall, a fence there anyway, to do that, and then they discussed also the possibility of having a gate through that, that only the adjoining property owners would have the right to have some sort of pass card to access through that to go to the commercial part of the development if they wanted to. That was the discussion during the planning commission meeting on that particular topic.
Why was it a masonry?
That was just what was discussed and talked about during the meeting. I think there was probably some confusion from the architect and the owner about what type of wall they were wanting to put. After the meeting, they came up and told me, what we really meant was not a solid masonry wall, but a wall that had, and I may be using the wrong words here, but masonry posts with wood fencing or whatever in between the posts, is what they meant to say. That's not what they actually said during the meeting.
That just seems like pretty big. I just wanna know what their purpose was or reasons.
That was it. Randy, one question.
Yeah, I'm gonna, quick note, I didn't mention there's multi-level buildings that are proposed with this development, which again, the general commercial portion currently allows four and a half stories, the OC, I believe, three and a half. And again, that is allowed with or without the special use permit, that height limitation is the zoning requirement.
Do we know whether the gas easement is a 10-foot or 15-foot?
It is a 10-foot easement.
So, it'd be five feet off...
That exists right now, yes.
It'd be five feet off the property line, that they would not be allowed to build a wall within that area.
And then, then the detention pond hits, so it'll slow down, so during the development process, we may have to look at putting that fence or wall if it gets conditioned to that or, and/or approved, on the other side of the detention pond, which is inside the wooded area there, so.
And so, the special use portion is really what we're here to look at, and that's the residential piece?
That is correct. That is correct.
And any other questions or discussion at this point? Thank you, Randy. I'll open up a public hearing relative to file case SU-18-05, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I guess I'll close the public hearing portion. I do have a question. David, you had mentioned in the work session that there are some other developments that the developer had done?
Yes.
That are not the same nature, but similar in nature, at least, so I'm guessing that's what you brought up right now.
Yeah, there were two sort of projects that he submitted to me. One was on Hope and Bridge Road in Alpharetta. The second project was, this is, I guess this is a Hope and Bridge Road project here. This is an office development, multiple building office development, multi-tenant as well. Most of those buildings were single-story, there were one, two, or five buildings in this development here. And, yeah, this one, this is the development, has two buildings in the rear that have two stories to them, so it's starting to get into multi-level construction at this point. But this is mostly a medical office development here. The second office, that's piece of industrial, that's a medical office. The second, the first pictures that we were looking at were for a development on Hope and Bridge Road. I believe that was a six, who wants to forward? One more? Yeah, you can wait, go back. Back, move forward, go back. Okay, so, yeah, so that's a seven building development on Hope and Bridge Road. I think it's about three miles east of the 400. But that's a single-story development with all the buildings, and it's a multi-tenant, mostly office, various offices used in that development as well. And I think we've discussed whether this would be something, this is a step up from where he normally is with projects. This is something that he'd like to see, that he really would like to leave behind. He chose Carterville to be able to do that. He likes everything that we have to offer here in the city. He likes the demographics, he likes the market, so he would, he is proposing a next step up with his developing career to do something like this. He can obviously speak to a lot more than I can, he's actually a couple days in the picture space.
Thank you. And I know that Council was, there was a letter of opposition that was sent to Council, and one of those objections was relative to parking and concerns about surrounding parking. Randy, if you don't mind, just speak to that, but they've actually, ample parking, actually above what we require as part of the development regulations, is that a correct statement?
That is correct. You did receive a letter that did include concern about parking. Their analysis that was included in your package did show they're probably at least 100 spaces over what the requirement is. They will have actual parking structures, which are very few of in the City of Carterville, if any, will there be basically parking deck-type structure where the residential can park under the building and so forth, so they, they're well over the minimum parking requirements. The other concern, I think, mentioned in the letter that y'all received was stormwater, and with that, that is addressed through the plan review process, and would be required to meet all city development codes.
And then, also as part of this, there's a traffic study that would need to be done to make sure that the roads at the corner...
That would be determined, that would be determined by city engineer during the plan review process. I did mention during the work session, Felton Road's actually a county road that access would have to be reviewed and approved by Bartow County, which they did during the previous development, which never was completed, as you can see. That is a right-in, right-out access point only off of Felton Road.
Okay. Just another question, I think you answered this before, but there's no stipulation for, there's no warrants for green space, it's all pretty...
It's what they have mixed in there, what they'll have, but there's...
I think it says a lot for this community that this is being discussed. I know there's a lot to be debated and talked over, but I'm excited for the conversation.
It's a very intense investment in this area of the city.
And I do, again, I think it's worth pointing out to Council and others, if there wasn't a desire to do the residential component of this, this could happen, I mean, it's already zoned for this to happen in a commercial fashion.
That is correct, with the office commercial and general commercial zoning.
So, again, as we go through this, what we're really looking at is that residential piece that's in there, and, that's, thank you, Randy. Any other questions or discussion from Council?
Mayor, I do know that the owner and their architect is present, you might wanna ask them to come forward, in case Council has questions of them about the project.
I was gonna let you do that during the, during the public hearing part, but when you didn't, I figured maybe you didn't wanna speak, but you're certainly welcome to. If you'd like, we'd be delighted to hear from you. And for our clerk, if you'll give your names and your addresses for our minutes, please.
Yes, my name is Baja Karasmi, I'm one of the partners and the developer on 1138 and 1136 North Tennessee Street.
My name is Samuel Kimani, my address is 228 Glenwood Drive, Kenton, and I'm the project architect.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion?
Mayor, if I could, since I sort of summarized what they told me about the fence after the meeting, I would like them, if they would, to tell Council what type of fence y'all actually meant to be constructed between your property and the neighborhood next door.
Yes, what my architect brought up is a masonry wall. Of course, he had in mind, we probably use some block walls and wood fence in between, and I think it was misunderstood because we really didn't have time to talk about the wall, and then we went and looked at the wall, if we do a masonry block wall and do really with brick at 800 feet to side, it'll be well over a million dollars cost us the wall. And I think more so the look of it, I personally thought it looked more like a prison than a development like we're trying to achieve here. And so, that's why when I went and I looked online for fence options, we are gonna spend, obviously, a lot of money in this project, and I definitely want the look and aesthetic of the fence to complement with the landscaping. I want it to be as discreet as possible. It needs to really just be a barrier between the two properties for safety issues, to protect our future residents, as well as, of course, what's behind us. But I assure you, the landscaping here is gonna be amazing, and the border really gonna be heavily landscaped, and my goal is not to really see the fence, so you see a beautiful landscape. And it needs to be reasonable, and it needs to be, I think I can work with the city with the development, when we get to that point, to make sure we build something that everybody is happy with.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Lovell, if the, obviously, that condition is a recommendation from the planning commission, would, if this were to be considered in the next meeting, obviously, there's two weeks between now and then...
Correct.
For them to work with the city, to come up with something that planning and development is comfortable with, as far as a fence that you feel is aesthetically pleasing and financially viable, that the city fits in with?
Yeah.
And then we could just recondition or just have the understanding...
Y'all could change that condition, and say, you know, whatever type of fence they propose to you.
Okay. Or one that's agreeable to the planning and development commission, we don't have to get into designing fences.
I understand.
Okay. All right.
What a question. Are you, I know this is probably, this is really about the special use, but are you planning to build this in stages, or are you gonna build this all at one time?
It will be, it will be a three-stage development, I think. It'll take, our estimate is dependent on demand, of course, but within three to four year completion.
So, are you, do you know where you would start? Would you start up on Tennessee Street and then go back?
Actually, if you go back to building four and five, our goal is... Actually, if you go back to building four and five, our goal is to start from back there, and then come forward maybe to building one, and then we can finish it up with the other two buildings. We want a little bit of residential establishment before we actually build all the commercial that can complement all those residential.
And these, and you're planning on the residential to be for-sale properties and?
They will be for-sale properties. I'm sure like every association condominium, we will have maybe 20% that investors will buy and rent, but no more than 20%.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here this morning for your words. All right, council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our meeting on October, or actually, what is it? October fif, no, it's October 4th, I believe.
October 4th.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that. Now we've got a series of, we have first reading ordinance. Chief Carter, you're up on this one, please, sir.
Thanks, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Respectfully ask you to consider a potential new city ordinance. The ordinance would be entitled "Response to Hazardous Material Emergencies, Fees, and Charges," and just as the title implies, what this ordinance will allow us to do is if we have a significant hazardous material incident or firefighting incident that involves hazardous materials, it does allow us recovery if we have extensive losses and attempting to mitigate. This is a companion ordinance that has already been approved by Bartow County, so it also will allow us to tie in with our automatic aid agreements and be working off the exact same ordinance.
This is similar to what other communities have in place?
It is. It is something that we just, quite honestly, we was unaware that, we just did not have it. A local municipality close by actually had a significant incident that occurred about three months ago. That made us kind of go back and relook, you know, and realize that this is something we missed several, several years ago. Now, I want to make a point very clear, when we say this is an ordinance that allows for fees and charges, this is not something that is done on a routine basis. This is only for significant major impacts. We prepare every year annually in the budget to take care of our community, but if we have a large incident that pretty well derails our budget or can cripple our normal operations, this does allow us a method of recovery beyond some form of legal action down the road.
Is there a reason we don't have a threshold number?
There is not a reason. I did not establish a threshold number. It could be placed in there, you know, we'd have to go back and consider. We did have, we, in my tenure here with Cartersville, there's only been one incident that we have ever even attempted to go back and ask for assistance and recovery. It was a chemical fire within a local facility, a great community partner. They worked very well with the city and the fire department at that time. Our loss at that one was approximately $30,000. That's enough to cause us a problem. One firefighter, his PPE or turnout gear that he wears is, and then when you throw the breathing apparatus on top of that, one firefighter's about $7,000. So if that one individual loses all of his protective clothing in a hazardous material incident, there's four to accompany. One engine company right off the bat, we're at $28,000. So you can see where if we have a major incident, it could really cause us some significant problems.
Yeah, I'm not saying that that threshold number has to be high. I mean, it could be, it could be $10,000, and it could be $50,000.
Are you asking about a minimum threshold or a maximum?
Yeah, just a minimum threshold.
At the pleasure of the council, we would be more than happy to.
Because that, because, you know, it's kind of, I know it's kind of open in general, but I just didn't know if there was a reason why it didn't have a?
No, sir, there's simply not.
Is that something council wants added before the next reading?
Say that again, say exactly what you're stating.
Is that something council?
No, no, as far as what Kerry's asking. Does he want a?
Do we want to add a minimum? Does he want a minimum threshold that this ordinance would kick in at? In other words, we would never ask for reimbursement if the cost was below X. If it's above X, we have the right to ask for reimbursement if the fire department needs it.
I think it gives a little bit more clarity to it, but, you know, when I don't want to derail our, the budget, like you said, it can really have a severe impact, and I know that what that number looks like, you know, if it's $10,000, I mean, that's a significant amount, then we set it, we set, but at the other point, there is a point where we do incur some of those costs in that. I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking that aloud, but.
And I'm trying, I'm trying to go back and try to read, I'm probably going to say this horribly incorrectly, but everybody's used to that. Is, hold on, give me just a second to look at this. The, was there anything about the cause of the fire that was in the, that was in the reason for having this? Incidents involving gas leaks, but I guess for instance, if it's a, if somebody doesn't get their lines marked and they bust a gas leak and then we have this, I don't see any reason why we would, I guess I would say if somebody doesn't mark a line, they hit a line, and it causes us to go out and have this, this gives us the opportunity to charge them for their negligence, for lack of a better term.
That is correct.
And that's kind of the spirit of this ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
So, your example was the hazardous, you know, material fire that we had that caused a lot of turnout gear to have to be replaced.
Correct.
Really what we're, and again, I think that's kind of where the spirit of this is, is if somebody has some kind of, does something negligent or does something they're not supposed to do, obviously we're going to go out there and take care of it.
That is, that is a side effect, but it's not really the spirit of the ordinance.
Okay.
The spirit of ordinance is to allow us the capability of a recovery for a significant incident. You know, we have other methods of citing people for negligent intent or et cetera, you know? So to answer your question on that, I wouldn't really say that that's the spirit. It does allow the capability, but currently right now, we have no footing to, ability to be able to recover a loss. Now, as far as a minimal, you know, I would definitely say, you know, a $10,000 window is, be more than acceptable, you know, as far as going back and writing that in, but it does open the door to what you're saying, but we have other methods as far as citing through ordinance enforcement to handle that type of issue.
So does a minimum, so a minimum threshold, is $10,000 a?
I would say that would be a fair number. I mean, you know.
Well, I'm not trying to paint, I don't think, I don't want us to paint ourselves into a corner and say, well, it's got to, you know, when it, you know, $8,000 may be significant too, so I was wondering if there, why there wasn't a threshold, but, I mean.
You're not saying?
For the exact same reason, for the exact same reason that you're questioning what you're asking right now, is how do we, how do we draw that line? You know, there's just so many variables. I can just honestly say that the intent of this is not to provide any form of routine fees or charges or revenue for the city. That is not the case. It is simply just to allow us a footing that if we have a significant incident that has deemed a negative impact on the overall operations of the city, it allows us an avenue to potentially recover those fees.
Worst-case scenario, a train that's carrying hazardous material turns over just outside of City Hall, I could, I mean, again, perish the thought, but.
Thank you for that, but yes, sir, that would be a good significant impact.
Knocking on some wood right now.
Not even able to sleep tonight, but it may happen this morning.
I mean, you take, you take that worst-case scenario that you're talking about.
I mean, that could be.
Graniteville, look at Graniteville, South Carolina, for example, that same scenario a decade or so ago completely took out the fire station because it was close to it, all the equipment. Y'all know yourself that, that one fire truck, you know, with the equipment on that is a half a million dollars. You take that out, you know, that's something that, you know, that's a problem.
And just so y'all know, in our ordinance, there is an appeal process contained in there that if, once we levy these charges against an individual, you know, they can talk to the fire chief about it, he can modify it based upon his discussions and the factors they give him, but if they're not happy with that, they can then appeal to the mayor and council. And the mayor and council, there are factors in there that y'all consider in determining whether to lower that amount. So there is a check in there that if, you know, somebody might consider the fees to be excessive, there's an avenue for them to appeal and bring that before y'all for your attention.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion right now? All right. Thank you, Chief. No vote on that, and you have the next item.
Thank you, sir. We're respectfully requesting approval of a budgetary item. This is our annual firefighter physicals. This is to provide the fitness clearance for all.